Good evening. This regular board meeting of the Waco Independent School Board is hereby called to order. All items which may be discussed or voted upon this evening have been posted as required by state law. I really do want to extend a warm welcome to everyone who is present and to our television viewers. The Board's purpose is to set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the superintendent and her staff. Dr. Spicer's first meeting.[36.61][36.61](laughter) I would just ask if you would please just turn off your cell phones to silence if you have not already done so. And we really do appreciate the time that you've taken to join us and for your interest in Waco Independent School District. Este junta regular de Waco ISD esta convocada. Les extendo un amable bienvenido a todos los que están presente y los que no se observan por televisión. También les quiero compartir que todas las conferencias esta disponible en la página de Waco ISD YouTube el lunes después de la conferencia. En ese página pueden escoger su idioma así toda la información que fue discutida esta disponible para todos. Por favor apagar su teléfono celular en las agredecimos el tiempo que compartí con nosotros y su interés en Waco ISD. As the Waco ISD Board of Trustees, there are guidelines and ethic guidelines that we hold to. Some of those are honor and conduct. We say, "We, as the Waco Independent School Board Board of Trustees, will always tell the truth. We will share our views while working for consensus. We will respect the majority decision as a decision of the Board. And we will base our decision on fact rather than supposition, opinion, or public favor." Moving on to item number two, public comments. Are there any? None? Seeing none, moving on to item three. Moment of silence. Would you please pause with me as we take time for prayer, contemplation, reflection, Thank you.
Leading our pledge this evening are Hillcrest Elementary Magnet School students Marcelina Ramos and Dominique Jones.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wonderful.
We now like to introduce our pledge leaders this evening. Marcelina Ramos is a fourth grader at Hillcrest Elementary Magnet School. You can give her a round of applause. Marcelina's favorite subject is reading. She also enjoys watching her favorite television shows, playing outside, riding her bicycle, and shopping at the mall. When she grows up, she wants to become a professional gymnast in the Olympics or a classroom teacher. We're hoping for the second one. Marcelina is the daughter of Marshall Ramos. Our other pledge leader this evening is Dominique Jones, also a fourth grader at Hillcrest His favorite subject is math. He enjoys playing basketball with his brother and sister and watching his favorite television shows. When he grows up, he would like to play in the NBA. Dominique is the son of Lamisha Powell. And thank you to Hillcrest Elementary Magnet School Principal Haley Dean for having her students with us tonight. Thank you, Ms. Each month, we recognize a Waco ISD community partner with the Texas Association of School Boards Stand Up for Public Education Award. This month's community partner is Pilot Travel Centers, commonly known as Flying J when you see them along the interstate. Pilot is the corporate sponsor of Waco ISD's Special Olympics program and is making it possible for the district to increase the number of students who are able to compete in athletic events and build their self-confidence and stay healthy. Accepting the award for Pilot Travel Centers are a few of our Special Olympic athletes who are benefiting from their support. They are sporting their new shirts provided by Flying J. Thank you to Perla Ramos of Waco High School, Alyssa Gonzalez, Cesar Chavez Middle School, Elizabeth Lizzie Mackin, and Justin Kimbrough, both of Tennyson Middle School, for accepting the award tonight. We would also like to recognize our teachers who coach these students outside of the classroom so they are able to participate. Please stand and be recognized if you are a Special Olympics coach. Thank you to our Waco ISD October Community Partner of the Month, Pilot Travel Centers and Flying J. And best of luck to our Special Olympic athletes this season. Thirty-three Waco ISD high school students were named Advanced Placement Scholars by the College Board this year in recognition of high achievement on college-level advanced placement exams. Nine Waco ISD students earned the AP Scholar with Distinction Award for earning an average score of at least 3.5 on all AP exams and scores of three or higher on five or more of the exams. We recognize first this evening Kevin Gutierrez of University High School. Andrea Slavano, University High School. Annabeth Carlson, Waco High School. Caroline C. Rice, Waco High School. Six Waco ISD students earned the AP Scholar with Honors awarded for earning an average score of at least 3.25 on all AP exams taken and scoring three or higher on four or more of the exams. Please help me congratulate Osmar D. Kazaris-Giann, University High School. Jonathan Leha Marine, Waco High School. Daniela Mercado, Waco High School. Denny A. Rivera, Espinoza, Waco High School. Eighteen Waco ISD students earned the AP Scholar Award for scoring three or higher on three or more AP exams. Hudson K. Harp, Waco High School. Finley E. McCallie, Waco High School. Isaiah Pullen, Waco High School. We would also like to introduce our teachers who supported these students and ensured that they received these milestones. From University High School, Becky Ziner. Ms. Ziner teaches language, and she had ten students who achieved this honor. Reyes Lopez, University High School. He's not with us this evening. He teaches Spanish and had twenty-nine students who qualified. Spencer Daniel of University High School. Mr. Daniel teaches world history and had eight students who achieved this honor. From Waco High School, Joel Colosimo. Mr. Colosimo teaches art and had eight students who qualified as AP Scholars. Paul Gonzalez of Waco High School. Mr. Gonzalez achieved with students in two different subject areas, including language, where he had ten students achieve AP Scholar status, and literature, where he had thirteen students achieve AP Scholar status. Teacher Joshua Marks of Waco High School. Mr. Marks teaches human geography and had fourteen students qualify as AP Scholars. Teacher Shannon Jones of Waco High School. Mrs. Jones teaches pre-calculus and had thirteen students qualify as AP Scholars. Rosa Pevia, Waco High School. Ms. Pevia teaches Spanish language and had eight students qualify. Kenneth Heller, US History, Waco High School. Mr. Heller had fifteen students qualify as AP Scholars. And finally, Nicole Bates of Waco High School. Ms. Bates teaches world history, and are you ready for this? I believe we're going to do a group photo. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. We'll bring in one school out first, and then we'll bring the second group in, and then we'll take a school out, so. You all can clap for our AP Scholars if you'd like. This is quite an accomplishment. Dr. Spicer, we're going to scoot you over a tiny bit. You're not very tall, so, there you go. Yes, absolutely, parents, if you want to come right here behind Ms. And this is Waco High School, so if we have any teachers, they need to be in this photo We'd also like to thank our principal, Joseph Alexander, and our associate principal, Takisha Alberti, for being with us tonight and helping your students excel. Thank you. So, our students are going to stay in place, please. Our students are going to stay in place, please. Congratulations to all of our AP Scholars. So, University High, I need you to stay, and Waco High, you are okay to go. So, if you're a University High School AP teacher, we need you to come into the photo, If our administrators are here, we'd like them in the photo too, please. Thank you to our principal, Alonzo McAdoo, and our University High Associate Principal, Dan Flagging, for being with us tonight and helping your students succeed. We are now ready to recognize our National College Board Recognition Scholars. Forty-five Waco ISD students earned College Board National Awards this year. They qualified in the categories of National African-American Recognition Program, National Hispanic Recognition Program, National Indigenous Recognition Program, and First Generation College Program for their scores on the PSAT. When announcing these students, we will recognize them in all of the categories in which they qualified. We'll begin with University High School. Please put your hands together for Jonathan Bautista, First Generation and Hispanic National And the banners that our students are receiving will hang in their schools, and they'll be immortalized in history. We now welcome Osmar Kazaris-Giann. He was selected in the categories of First Generation and Hispanic. We now recognize Angel De La Cruz, who was selected in the categories of First Generation Kevin Gutierrez in the category of First Generation. Jayden Lopez in the category of Hispanic. Justin Neal in the categories of African-American and First Generation. Joseph Ramos in the category of First Generation and Hispanic. Derek Thomas qualifying in the area of National African-American Recognition Scholar. Stiven Useda, category of First Generation Scholar. Thomas Vedonya qualifying in the categories. First Generation and Hispanic National Recognition Scholar. That's his daddy, in case you didn't know. We will bring back our University High School students back for a group photo, and if we could have our administrators join us for that. And we will bring everybody back for one big group photo after we recognize Waco High So, look at your neighbor and make sure your banners are even, please. Look at your neighbor. Perfect. You guys look amazing. How about a round of applause for them? We're now ready to recognize our Waco High School College Board National Recognition Scholars. To begin our recognition for the Lions, Isabella Ganski, recognized in the category of Hispanic. Jeremiah De La Rosa, recognized in the category of Hispanic. Andrew Gonzalez, recognized in the category of First Generation and Hispanic. Eli Giann, recognized in the categories of First Generation and Hispanic. Jonathan Leha Marine, recognized in the categories of First Generation and Hispanic. Oscar Laredo, recognized in the categories of First Generation and Hispanic. Daniela Mercado, recognized in the categories of First Generation and Hispanic. Abigail Ochoa, recognized in the category of Hispanic. And that's her daddy. Isaiah Pullen, recognized in the categories of African-American and First Generation. Kareem Reyes, recognized in the categories of First Generation and Hispanic. Denny Rivera Espinoza, recognized in the category of First Generation and Hispanic. Lily Rose, recognized in the category of First Generation. Isaiah Taverra, recognized in the category of Hispanic. August Zimmerman, recognized in the category of Hispanic. We're going to bring all of our Waco High students back for a group photo, and then we will bring our University High College Board Scholars back in as well for a big group So, ladies, I need you to... Yep, there you go. And if you're on the second row, I need you to hold it at your shoulder level, please, so that they can see it. Thank you. Look at your neighbor and make sure you're even, please. It's like paparazzi. Now, we're going to bring in our University High Scholars, and I need you all to intermingle, Check your neighbor, make sure you all are even, okay? I also, just a friendly reminder, all of the photos our professional photographer is taking tonight will be on the Waco ISD Flickr account, F-L-I-C-K-R, no E in there. We also will put tonight's ceremony on our YouTube channel, so you can catch that tomorrow, and the pictures will be up tomorrow as well. So, you can pull anything you want. If I could have your attention, please? We have one more scholar that we would like to recognize. He is one of our AP Scholars from Waco High School, Mr. Fletcher Woodward. I would also like to give a shout out to Paula Miller. Paula oversees Advanced Academics and is the power behind this program. So thank you very much, Ms. Miller. And board members, that's all the recognitions we have this evening. What a great way to start, right?
Can we turn the temperature down? It's hot.
Okay, moving on to item number five, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Spicer.
All right. Thank you so much, Madam President, Board of Trustees. Tonight ends my 10th day on the job here as Waco ISD Superintendent. Since starting my first day Tuesday, October 15th, I've been greeting staff, students, and families during morning drop-off at Dean Highland Elementary. My days have also been filled with joy and excitement of meeting many of our students, our teachers, our bus drivers, our custodians, cafeteria staff, principals, police officers, and so many of our other dedicated Waco ISD team members as I've been making my way to each and every school and every facility across the district. As I share with each of you, I believe it's essential to first listen and learn in order to lead effectively. During my initial 90 days, I am focused on conducting a comprehensive listening and learning tour across Waco ISD, engaging our students, our parents, teachers, staff, and community leaders to understand their experiences and their insights into our district. From what I've seen, heard, and learned so far, it's not going to surprise any of you. Ours is a community of learning led by the heart. We believe in our students, and they're clearly what matters. You can see from our classrooms, our training rooms, and even the break rooms at our transportation office. Everything we do is for our students. The incredible heart and wisdom here in Waco ISD is truly working wonders. I'm so excited to continue my visits, meetings, and events, and look forward to bringing you further updates on my initial engagement. I would also encourage anyone who was interested to visit our website, where you can learn more about my engagement plan and how I plan to utilize this listening and learning tour to continue to advance our work together here in Waco ISD. We have a couple other celebrations taking place this past week, Waco High School Homecoming. That was my first Friday in Waco ISD celebrating the homecoming of Waco High Lions. I appreciate the staff and students who planned this special event throughout the week, including Burning of the W, the pep rally, the parent community tailgate, and all the special halftime festivities. Being down on the sidelines, which is my favorite part, for a portion of the game, and at halftime, I enjoyed celebrating the crowning of this year's king, Mr. Kelvin Young, who I had the pleasure of meeting on Wednesday, during the existing Waco High weight room, and Queen Trinity Freeman. I understand that being crowned Waco High's Homecoming Queen runs in the family, with Trinity's mother having also been queen during her senior year when she was a Waco Lion. Again, I want to thank Mr. Alexander and his staff, who helped put together all the homecoming activities. I know it means a lot to our current and former students and their families. So tomorrow night, it's going to be the place to be in Waco ISD. Our Lions and our Trojans will go to face off in our Waco ISD stadium. This will be the first time since 2017 that both teams have competed together. I know our coaches, their athletes, the athletic department, and our police department have prepared and planned for this much anticipated game. We're expecting a large crowd and do want to remind fans that tickets must be purchased in advance. We will be enforcing a clear back policy, and there will be security checks at the gates. So please make sure you plan accordingly. The excitement for the game Friday will be showcased bright and early tomorrow morning. So those of us who are here tonight, we're going to be up early, 6 o'clock in the morning, on Channel 25 broadcasting live from our stadium as part of their game of the week. The broadcast will shine a positive light on our students, our athletics, and our fine arts programs, and the district as a whole. I am grateful to all of our staff, students, and families that will be setting their alarms much earlier tomorrow morning to start game day with a special Waco ISD pep rally. Brook Avenue Elementary Food Distribution. Another highlight of my first week was joining several of you, board members, to volunteer at Brook Avenue's second monthly food distribution for their community. This special partnership with Shepherd's Heart and Mount Carmel Baptist Church involves our 5th grade students and staff giving back and meeting the needs of their community. The school, with the support of their partners, plan to continue to host these special community food distributions every second Friday of the month. The next one will be on November 8th, so please come out and join us. Thanksgiving Family Meals. Beginning November 6th, Waco ISD families will begin enjoying Thanksgiving Family Meals at all of our schools. I'm excited to experience what I understand as a special annual tradition for our students, our staff, and our families. I want to thank our Nutrition Services Team for their planning and preparation for these efforts. We will share the meal calendar on our website, social media accounts, and in our newsletters. Two important things to note, as in the past two years, we have both lunch and dinner meal times, and some school meals will be hosted at larger campuses to accommodate more attendees. Last but not least is our PEEMS Snapshot data. Tomorrow is the last Friday in October, which is the day our official snapshot data that is provided to TEA for the 2024-2025 school year. While we're still refining the data, as of October 21st, our records reflect that we have 13,362 students. That's about 155 students less than last year, representing just under a 1% decrease from last year. 62.41% of the students enrolled in Waco ISD are Hispanic. 27.54% of our students are African American, and 7.83% of our students are white, and 2.63% are coded as two or more races. Approximately 87.56% of our students are economically disadvantaged, and about 26.27% are limited English proficient. 18.22% of our students are in special education programs, which is an increase from 2.32% from last year's anticipated snapshot. So we will provide more information once we solidify those numbers and submit to the state. Thank you so much.
That was a lot. There's a lot in the first 10 days there. Thank you so much, Dr. Spicer. Right now, we're going to pause our public meeting and open up a public hearing on the 2024 First Report. So this is item number six, Public Hearing on the 2024 Annual Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas and Report, School First. Ms. Davis, or not Mr. Sherry? You're here. Okay. Great.
So good evening, Dr. Spicer, President Cordawag, and members of the board. I'm Sherry Smith. I'm the Executive Director of Finance. And tonight, I will be presenting the Waco ISD 2024 Annual Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas Report. Okay, this School Financial Integrity Rating Report was authorized by the legislature in 1999 and started and was implemented in 2000. The primary goal is to achieve improved performance in the management of school district resources. And the reason that this system was implemented in 2000 is that a lot of school districts had depleted their fund balance and were running into some issues financially. And so the state wanted to implement a system so that TEA could have advanced notice of any school districts that were heading financially the wrong direction. The objectives are to assess the quality of the financial management in Texas public schools, to measure and report the extent that the financial resources are used for instructional purposes, and to evaluate the quality of financial management decisions. This year, there are 21 indicators, up from 20 last year. There's four critical indicators. There's 10 solvency indicators. Five financial, I'm sorry, seven financial competency indicators. And these measurement indicators are graded in three different ways. So we have the critical indicators, which are yes/no indicators. They're also known as pass/fail indicators. So if you fail any of those four critical indicators, you fail the entire School First Report, regardless of how you did with all the other indicators. The next type of indicator is the ceiling indicator. This, based on your score for those items, that it limits the maximum total points available that you can get on that report. So for example, indicator 17 is... It tests for material weakness. So if you fail that indicator, then the highest you can receive, the highest score that you can receive is a C, which meets standard achievement. And then the other indicators are based on a rubric, and you can obtain 0 to 10 points for those. So what are the district requirements for the School First? Well, we have to write up an annual financial management report. This report includes the results of all those different first indicators. We have to explain why we performed the way we did on those indicators, and we also have to compare those indicator results to the prior year. We have to conduct a public hearing, which is what we're doing today. And we have to have had published advanced notice of today's hearing, which we did, and have provide the opportunity for public input. Going on to our indicators. The first one I'd like to discuss was, was the complete annual financial report and data submitted to the Texas Education Agency within 30 days of the January 28th deadline? Yes, it was. We submitted our report on the 26th, and they received it the same day. Was there an unmodified opinion in the annual financial report? On the financial report, the financial statements as a whole? And unmodified is also known as like a clean opinion. It shows that there's no material misstatements, and yes, we received an unmodified opinion on our financial statements. Was the school district in compliance with the payment terms of all debt agreements at the end of the fiscal year? Yes, we were in compliance. Did the school district make timely payments to the teachers' retirement system, Texas Workforce Commission, Internal Revenue Service, and other government agencies? Yes, all of our payments were made timely. This next one is fairly new, but it's not. This one is, was the total net position balance of the government activities in the statement of net position greater than zero? Well, it was, it's a rewritten indicator. So it hadn't been graded for the past several years, five or six years it hadn't been graded. Because when GAZBee implemented those requirements, where we had to book the district share of the state's pension obligation or OPEB obligations, most school districts had a negative net position, and so they didn't score this indicator. But this year, they changed it to where they netted out those OPEB and... Sorry, the pension liability. And so then they started grading it again. And so our total net position was 47,632,717, well above the zero. So we passed all those indicators. Okay, the next indicators measures is, was the average change in fund balance over three years less than a 25% decrease? Or did the current year fund balance exceed 75 days of operational expenditures? Well, this indicator measures the percent change in fund balance to see if the fund balance is declining too quickly and whether it's sufficient to operate the school district for at least 75 days. Well, our average change in fund balance over three years was an increase of 4.77%. So we passed that indicator, and also it was definitely sufficient to operate for at least 75 days.
What indicator, pardon me, what indicator are you on when you're saying that?
The first bullet.
Okay. Thank you.
This, the next one is the number of days of cash on hand in current investments in the general ledger. Was it sufficient to cover our operating expenditures? You have to have at least 90 days to pass that indicator, and we can cover, based on our amount, we can cover 179.94 days. So we didn't have any problems with that indicator. The next indicator was the measure of current assets to current liability ratio sufficient to cover short-term debt. Basically, it wants to make sure that you've got enough short-term assets at the end of the year to pay off your short-term liabilities. And you have to have a score of greater than three on that indicator, and our ratio of current assets to current liabilities was 5.9274. So no problems there. The next indicator, did the general fund revenue cover expenditures? Or is the number of days of cash on hand greater than or equal to 60 days? You have to have, like I said, have to have at least 60 days of cash on hand. We had enough to cover 179.94 days. Our general fund revenue exceeded our expenditures, excluding those facility acquisition and construction expenses, by $2.5 million. So we're in good shape. The next three indicators, I'm going to read them, but we're going to discuss them later in the presentation. These are the three questions where the school district lost a few points. So the next three indicators are, was the ratio of long-term liabilities to total assets sufficient to support long-term solvency? Was the correlation between future debt requirements and the district's assessed property value? Was the administrative cost ratio equal to or less than the threshold ratio? And so again, I'll cover those briefly. And the next indicator is, was there not a 15% decline in the students-to-staff ratio over three years? So that decline cannot exceed 15%, and our percent of decline was a .53% decrease. And our staff-to-student ratio for the 22-23 school year was 6.265 to 1.
I have a question. When you say staff, that's not teacher-to-student ratio, right? That's all staff?
Yes.
Okay.
So the next indicator is, was the, is asking if the actual ADA within the allotted range of the biennial projection submitted to ADA? And this indicator was not graded this year. Again, even though this is the '24 report, this is based on the '22-23 school year, and because of the impact on COVID and our enrollment and ADA, the state is not holding districts to this, and they're not grading it this year. The next indicator is, did the comparison of PEEMS data to the information in the annual financial report result in a total variance of less than 3%? Our variance was .004%. So well less than the 3%. Did the external auditor report that the annual financial report was free of any material weaknesses in internal controls over financial reporting and compliance for local, state, or federal funds? Yes, our report was free of any material weaknesses. Did the external auditor report that the annual financial... Oh, I'm sorry, I just read that. Did the external auditor indicate that the annual financial report was free of any instances of material noncompliance for grants, contracts, and laws? Yes, we're definitely in compliance with everything. We are free from any material noncompliance. Was required financial information posted on the district's website as required? Yes, it is. Were the property values discussed at a board meeting within 120 days of adopting the budget? So for the 22-23 school year, those property tax values, or the property values, were discussed at the May 19th, '22 board meeting. And the last bullet is a new indicator. Did the district receive an adjusted repayment schedule for more than one fiscal year for an overallocation of the foundation school program because of a financial hardship? No, we did not. Okay, so in addition to those indicators, explaining our scores and comparing them to the past previous year, there's other some disclosures we have to put in there. The superintendent's current contract. The superintendent's current contract. Because we received our preliminary scores in August, we used the previous superintendent's contract. Next year we'll have Dr. Spicer's contract. We also have a schedule of all the lodging, meals, travel and other reimbursement that the board members and superintendent received. That is in that report. There's a schedule of outside compensation paid to the superintendent. There was no payments, but the, the schedule is still in there with blanks. There's a schedule of gifts with an aggregate value in excess of two hundred and fifty dollars to the superintendent and board members from outside entities and there was no gifts reported to us. And the last schedule is all business transactions between the board members and the district and their board members. Okay, so the ratings are basically like school, A, B, C, D, F, or not D, I'm sorry, A, B, C, F. So A is between ninety and a hundred points. B is eighty to eighty-nine points. C is seventy to seventy-nine points. So there, you can receive superior, above standard or meet standard, or you can fail. So if anything below seventy points is an F and it's substandard achievement. So you can also receive a no rating and that's, that's given to school districts that are in the middle of an annexation consolidation arrangement with other school districts and so they're given like a three-year pass and then after that three years, then they'll start getting ratings again. But if a school district fails and they receive an F, then there's a corrective action plan that has to be followed. There's assignment of a financial monitor and there's also an accreditation investigation. So nobody wants to fail. The ceiling indicators, those are the ones that I mentioned that if you fail them, there's a maximum high score that you can get. You can't get above that score if you fail any of those criteria. So I just provided a list of those indicators and if you fail them, what your maximum score is. We didn't fail any of those indicators. All right, so ta-da, our score. So we received an A, superior achievement. We received a score of ninety-two out of a hundred. So we bet all of our critical indicators. We received the maximum points for each of the solvency indicators with the exception of indicators eleven, twelve and thirteen, and then indicator ten was one of those two that wasn't evaluated. We also received the maximum points for each of the scored financial competency indicators and again, indicator fifteen was not evaluated. All right, so let's go on to the ones where we've lost a few points. Okay, solvency indicator number eleven. Indicator states, was the ratio of long-term liabilities to total assets for the school district sufficient to support long-term solvency? If the school district's increase of students and membership over five years was seven percent or more, or a thousand or more students and membership, then the school district passes this indicator. Well, we're not in an increasing enrollment situation, so that little caveat doesn't apply to us. So taking that, the question, um, it's sort of like asking if someone, if their mortgage exceeds the value of their home. They're just wanting to make sure about our long-term liabilities and our ability to pay them. Since we've issued three separate bond issues, um, we did have some issues with that indicator, not much. We did lose four points because our ratio of long-term liabilities to total assets is point seven zero one two. And if, um, your score is between greater than point seven but less than point eight, you score an eight. I'm sorry, a six. So we lost four points. But the, the issue that is a little frustrating is that if you score greater than, um, I'm sorry, less than point seven, you have scored eight points and our score is point seven zero one two. So just, just a little, little hair and we lost another two points. So, um, that was just a little frustrating when you look at it that way.
Can you explain that, please? No, I, I, I'm getting the point seven zero one two. Can you tell me why we received that score? That percentage ratio score?
Sure.
What specifically impacted that?
Well, we issued seventy-two point eight million of this unlimited school bond series twenty-two, twenty-two B and then we issued another seventy-eight point four million in series twenty-two, twenty-three. So that caused our ratio to be.
Is that your debt to asset ratio?
So we had a lot, we've issued a lot more debt.
Their fear is that we wouldn't be able to pay for it.
Right. But a six is still, it's only four points. And we needed the, we needed the bond issue for our campuses.
Absolutely. Keep going. I have a couple more questions. I'll hit them.
So the next indicator, solvency indicator number twelve. What's the correlation between future debt requirements and the district's assessed property value? So it basically asks if the school districts has the ability to make debt principal interest payments that will come due during the year. We did lose two points on this ratio, again, because of the issuance of bond debt. The district's debt per hundred dollars of assessed property value ratio was five point six nine zero eight. So it was, it was greater than four and less than seven, so we received a score of eight. We only lost, we lost the two points. Solvency indicator number thirteen. Was the school's district administrative cost ratio equal to or less than the fresh threshold ratio? TEA and state law have set a standard on the percentage of the budget that school districts can spend on administration. So it's like, where did we fall in relation to that standard for our district? Well, the schedule starts at, you know, less than five hundred kids. It moves up five hundred to a thousand, a thousand to five thousand, to five thousand, to ten thousand and then boom, everybody else. So even though we're considered like a medium-sized school district, we're being compared against Austin and the Houston and Dallas and we're all in the same boat. So, um, our administrative cost ratio was nine point seven five percent. And that ratio falls between the categories for our size to receive eight points. So we did lose two points for that. I think they should have some other criteria above the ten thousand, you know. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, now, given that this is a public hearing, is there any member of the public that has questions or wish to address the board on this matter? Okay. Did you, you have a question? Yes, Mr. Patton.
Could you explain, sorry, could you explain to me, um, indicator nineteen? As well as seventeen and twenty-one? Seventeen, nineteen and twenty-one?
Sorry, I just need to get the report out because I don't have them numbered like that on my presentation. Seventeen, did the external auditor report that?
Right. And we were, we scored a seventy-nine on it, I believe? Well, looking at the scores of determination ratios. So it says ceiling pass. Is, is that just as, um, looking on page ten of our handout?
That's if a school district fails.
Okay.
That's the, that's the highest score that you can get is a seventy-nine. We didn't fail that indicator.
As we passed it in.
Uh huh.
Okay, and then nineteen?
Because if we, just to go back to that, if we would have failed it, then we wouldn't have the A rating, we would have the C rating.
Okay. Uh, uh, tell me about nineteen, please.
Um, our financial, did the school district post the required financial information on its website? We have, um, our check register, we have our annual budget, um, we have our financial statements. All of our required postings are there.
So that's a score, it, it shows a five on page eight.
We received the maximum score.
That's the maximum.
That's the maximum.
That's what I wanted to hear. My last question, what did we score last year?
We were scored two points higher.
Ninety-four.
But this year we issued, well, the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, um, so we scored ninety-two, we scored ninety-four.
Right.
So, um, we issued two more issues of bond issue. Um, I have those dates for you, but that, they fell in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. So the first year we lost, you know, a point because we issued the series twenty-two, twenty-two. And then we lost an additional two points this year because we issued the twenty-two, twenty-two B and the twenty-two, twenty-three.
Okay. Thank you for answering my questions.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
And I do have some copies for the public in case anybody wants one.
Great. Let's see. We will go ahead and close the public hearing and resume our board meeting. Thank you so much, Sheri. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on to item seven, information items reports. Mr. Grant, do you have any questions on seven A?
Do not.
Uh, Mr. Davis, any questions on seven A?
No.
Uh, Vedanya?
No.
Angelo?
Nope.
And Patton?
No.
Okay, uh, any questions seven B? Mr. Grant?
No.
Uh, Mr. Davis?
No.
Mr. Vedanya?
No.
Uh, Mr. Ochoa?
No.
Uh, Mr. Patton?
No.
Okay, great. And now I believe we're going to go on to item seven C, report on twenty-two, twenty-four delinquent tax collection, tal, blablabla, sorry about that, collections. We have Mr. Myers and Mr. Buchanan and I was going to try to say all the names in your, the firm, but then I thought I'm going to stumble over that. So thank you so much for being here.
None, none of them are all that important since none of them include Buchanan and Myers.
That's right.
They're not here.
That's true, too. Members of the board, Spicer, Dr. Spicer, I'm Robert Myers, I'm an attorney with McCray Law Firm. I'm here with Connor Buchanan, who's also a member of our law firm. Our law firm, along with the Beard Colgen Law Firm and, and Rick Boswick, are the attorneys that represent you in property tax collections. Rick is called away today, so he's not here. Connor and I are here, the best of the duo. If I, if I may, just give it just a little background, um, this is my forty-fourth year in representing the district in property tax collections. I started at a law school in nineteen eighty, working for the city of Waco as an assistant city attorney. At that time, the city of Waco had a tax office at Tenth and Columbus and it collected the taxes to the city in the school district and an assistant city attorney at Waco was responsible for overseeing the, the collection of the taxes and a brand-new, right out of law school attorney, uh, was, uh, assigned to do that job as an assistant city attorney. I did that as a city attorney for approximately a little over six years, close to seven years. Uh, and in nineteen eighty-seven, uh, the district, along with the city of Waco, retained our law firm and, um, and the law firm got the benefit of having the business for the school and the business for the city and they got Robert to go along with it. So a plus and a minus there. But I've been working for our firm for thirty-seven years, with the seven years previously, more or less, with the city of Waco. So adding up next forty-four years of, of representing the district. And this will be my, my final year in, in representing the district in, in property tax matters as I'm retiring at the end of the year. And Connor is, is a member of our community here and he'll be taking over as, uh, the attorney for our firm, representing the school district. And I just want to thank you for, uh, for on behalf of our firm, for allowing our firm to represent you and just personally for putting up with me for the last forty-four years assisting in property tax collections. Um, the, uh, we've got our standard report for you tonight. I was thinking, um, uh, anybody who thinks it's glamorous to be a school board member should sit through the first financial reporting, uh, and then have to listen to a report on property tax collections, uh, finish it all off. But, um, I know that all of that is important, uh, to the district, the financial, I think the district, of course, is important and reporting of that. And I'll just briefly go through if, if, I guess my, somewhere, oh, is it, is, is my report of the, the PowerPoint somewhere in the, in the system or just, is it on your screen and I'll just go through the report if it's on your screen? Usually it's on the screen.
It's not on right now. You have the clicker?
I've got a clicker. Should I click it?
They're uploading it.
Took Connor, I, who knows how many hours of trying to color in between the lines to get all those charts, pie charts and bar charts colored.
What would we do at school board conventions without you there? Man, I'm sad.
Don't want that answered in public.
Forty-four years is a long time and you have done a fantastic job, just really so thankful for the way that you handle members of our community and the delicate balance that you and your firm takes in terms of collection. And I know tax collection is never an easy subject, but I just, I think it's so important that, that you live here and you are, you, these are your neighbors, you know, these are, and, and you've done it really with a, with such a, a grace. So thank you.
And the impact on our neighbors has led some of the members of my family, just my wife and two sons, to many times disavow any knowledge of me at all.
Robert and I share offense.
Do you really?
We do. My dog barks at him all the time.
So do I. Barking.
Mr. Buchanan, you have some, some big shoes to fill, but I'm more than sure you'll do a wonderful job.
I have been working with Mr. Myers the last couple of years and learning words, if you will, so just on the tender part of the public consent again. He's been a joy and a pleasure.
Oh, that's great. Well, welcome. We look forward to getting to know you better as well.
Well, that's the first page of my report. Can I just go ahead with clicker or is there something more that needs to be? There we go, that's it.
It's not running, it's a PowerPoint. I think they're just going to run it to the back.
If you, if you can just bring up that first chart, that'd be great. Appreciate your indulgence with us here tonight. This, this chart, as I've prepared for you in the past, this is a chart that has your current tax collections for each of the past five years. And as it has for the past five years, uh, it indicates, I think, a rather strong sign for the district. The district collected ninety-eight point thirty-two percent of its taxes in the last current, uh, school fiscal year from, from the tax year from October one through Au- August the thirty-one of two thousand and twenty-four. Um, in the prior years, you were at ninety-eight forty-four, ninety-eight sixty-eight, and actually the COVID year, ninety-seven to seventy-seven dropped and in two thousand and nineteen, before we had that, you're at ninety-eight, uh, twenty-three percent. So overall, the district has consistently collected ninety-eight percent of its taxes throughout the year, which I think is a strong positive sign that the community, I think which drives property tax collections is the ability of people to pay. I think this is an indication that the property owners and residents of Waco ISD are employed, they have the funds and are conscientious about paying their debts, especially their property taxes. Very small percentage of your taxes actually go to Lincoln. And there's, if you have my report, another thing, it's not on this chart, uh, just to, just to point out, that last year, your two thousand and twenty-three debt, uh, levy, tax levy was eighty-six million dollars. That was down from a hundred and three million dollars in two thousand and twenty-two and that decrease is a positive thing in that the legislature took action and the voters took action to enhance the, the home sit exemption, uh, for, for our taxpayers in Waco ISD. So it goes up to a hundred thousand dollars for your home sit exemption. They also did a rate compression, so your tax rate dropped and so the levy dropped substantially twenty, nearly twenty million dollars, was less imposed on our property owners in Waco ISD. And I think that's, that's a very positive thing. I think I mentioned to you last year, um, increase in the home sit exemption to a hundred thousand means if you have a home that is valued at a hundred thousand dollars or less in Waco ISD, you don't owe Waco ISD any money for your property taxes on a go-forward basis. And frankly, if, if, if your home is in that status, now we got a realtor here who knows a lot about values of homes, um, you probably need to spend your money on more important things for you and your family to get by on life than paying property taxes for Waco ISD. I just hope that state continues to reimburse you, uh, for that loss of revenue, but, uh, but I think it's a good thing for our property owners. Over the years that I've, forty-four years I've worked with your property owners, we've had to deal with all segments of the society of Waco ISD taxpayers and it's those people who we most reach out to and try to work with. Those folks are less able, uh, to make, to make their payments on their property taxes. And for that reason, you know, we, we And for that reason, you know, we reach out to them, we work with them. They come into our office. We're bilingual in our office. We can try to converse with those folks and make sure they understand their obligation to pay the school district taxes. But at the same time, we want to work in into their schedule of life so that it doesn't become more onerous than it really should be. Because we realize they're members of our community, our neighbors, and many times, the parents of the kids at schools. And they don't need to be under more stress than I think what the school board would want it to be. But overall, net result is you've got a good collection of your property taxes. The next chart has a little bit of anomaly in it. If you can bring that one up. This next chart is the same five tax years, but we've added into not just your current tax collections that year, but we've added in during the same period of time, your delinquent collections and the penalties and interest that are collected on your taxes. And typically, the district, when it compares it to its levy, collects over 100% of your levy. But in this year, in 2023, it dropped down to 98.71%, which is a substantial drop. The reason for that is not because your tax collection, either current collection, as we just saw, was really strong. Your delinquent collections that we were able to achieve for the district were in line with what they've had in prior years. Is that if you looked at the reports, there were substantial, literally millions of dollars in reduction of tax levies for prior years by the appraisal districts, making changes to the appraisal roll, not just for 2023, but for prior years, 2022 and '21 and so forth, because there were lawsuits pending and adjustments made that property owners were seeking, and those were done in this year. And it ended up showing actually that we collected for Waco ISD in the past 12 months, minus $500,000. And that just statistically goes to offset what actually came in the door. And, which was even more than that because of how the numbers work at the tax officer reports. So if it has a reduction from 100%, it really isn't 100%. It's just that you gave, the money came in one door and it went out the other door. Both Ms. Davis and I pondered over those reports, and it's just, it is just what it is because it's a net, it's a net what you recover out of this, which is really what's most important. But it doesn't indicate there's any, there's any lack of effort or there's any downturn in your tax collections. It's just adjustments made for property owners. And the next report I have, this just shows another sign of the strength of your tax collections. These are the last five years, what's been collected to date from October 1 of each of those years through September 30th this year. As you can see, after you get through 2023, you're over 99% of the collection of your levy. A very small percent of your taxes go uncollected. And those might be on businesses that fail, that go out of business, and there's nothing left to collect either from the business or from the assets of business because they've gone away. And, but that's a small fraction, less than 1%, relatively, much more, smaller than that, of your levy. So overall, it shows a positive sign for the district. You get everything that's your levy for your taxes for the most part. And the next three pie charts, I think they're on one slide. These just show what we've collected in the last referrals that you've given to us. Each July, you turn over to us your unpaid taxes from the prior year. The pie chart at the top, these are the taxes you turned over to us in July of this year. Those are 2023 taxes, and we've collected 42%, almost 43% of those taxes in three months since you've turned over to us. The taxes you turned over to us last year, we've collected 71%. And the taxes turned over to us 27 months ago, we've collected 83% of those. A very small percentage of those taxes are uncollected. That's the difference between 100% and 99. whatever percent, and we're continuing our collection activities on there. The single largest category unpaid taxes for the district, and this is not necessarily a negative thing, it's just for information, is that property owners who are seniors, which some of us are actually experiencing that in our lives, not to name names, are, if they're seniors or they're disabled or disabled veterans, they're entitled to file a deferral that prevents the tax collection on a resident homestead. And it's the largest category in your delinquent tax list are people in that category who've achieved that. They're seniors or in a resident homestead, and they don't have to pay their taxes on their property because they're protected from that under state law. How that works is that when that property ceases to be their homestead, either they move away from it or they pass, then the taxes become due and payable to the district. So you don't lose your money, it's just deferred. It's a deferral. That's technically what it's called. And that's the single largest pie slice of what's unpaid, really, overall, for the past few years. But overall, the district has a very good collection rate. And we appreciate the opportunity to work with you and your taxpayers to get these taxes collected. And Connor would like to finish with a couple of little specifics about how we go about doing these tax collections.
Thank you, Robert. So this next slide is an outline of the collection activity that we undertake throughout the last fiscal year for the district. You'll notice a significant difference between the number of tax notices that we actually send out. A little bit of background on that is prior to any of these taxes actually being turned over to us for collections. We give notice via first-class mail to your property owners that have delinquent taxes, letting them know that if it does remain delinquent, that they will have to start working with the attorneys to get that taken care of. And between that and what Robert has described, you know, they call attorneys lots of names. Most of them are not nice, but one of the good ones is counselor, and we try to embody that at the law firm. As Robert said, our office is open to your taxpayers at any point to come in and either, one, you know, work out a payout agreement. But I think one of the unique things that we enjoy about this job is we actually do get to help your taxpayers with things like payout agreements or actually availing them to some of the protections under the property tax code, whether those are exemptions, whether those are deferrals. I spend as much time talking to taxpayers as actually doing legal work, which is a good thing. So. But the legal work that we did undertake this year, we ended up filing about 150 suits in Waco ISD. A significant number less of those are actually have to proceed to court. And then a smaller number than that, as far as the tax sales of the properties that we post for tax sale. We posted 68 this year, and I believe only 20-something of them actually had to sell. Those properties that we do end up selling at the courthouse steps are almost exclusively either vacant lots or properties that have been abandoned. So they're going either to the city in trust, or they're going to someone that's going to utilize those and actually improve them and put some more money back on the tax roll for the district and for the other taxing units. So. And then if you could look that last slide for me, please. Next one. Thank you. So this is kind of the counterpoint to what Robert mentioned earlier about those values and those adjustments made by the appraisal district. Apart from the delinquent collections, one of the other services we provide at no cost to the district, it's called the taxable value audit. So what we do is we look back two years for any of those adjustments that the appraisal district has made. And we can actually send that audit to the Texas State Comptroller's Office. Any of those dollars that you lost as a result of those adjustments by the appraisal district are supposed to come back to you in state aid due to this audit that we performed for the district. We did file one this last fiscal year. It was looking back all the way to the 2021 tax year. And that resulted in, that last one there is $1.5 million in additional state aid for the district. Over the last seven years, we've put almost $7.3 million with the taxable value audit back to the district, which, again, almost completely offsets and really over-offsets those refunds that were given by the appraisal district for this year.
So these are funds that folks in our community weren't able to pay? And you filed with the state, and the state reimbursed us for those funds? Is that what that is?
So, yeah. So when the appraisal district, when they settle a lawsuit, or if you have individuals that file an exemption late, that reduces your taxable value, which is where those refunds that Robert was talking about come from. You know, the state finance equation is part of its property taxes, part of its state aid. When your values and your property taxes go down, that means the state aid is supposed to go up. So we wait, the state says we can look back up to two years. And so when the two-year mark comes up, we'll look at all of those adjustments made. We send that information to the state, and then they increase the state aid after that point in time. So. Any other questions? Mr. Myers?
Again, thank you for giving Connor and I a chance to visit me tonight, and thank you for the last 44 years. And good luck to you in the future.
Mr. Myers, I just wanted to say, it's going to be, it's going to be a lot different not spending time with you at the school board conferences. And I'm glad none of your collection methods include kneecaps, but we appreciate all the work you guys have done for us. And I hope you enjoy retirement.
Kneecaps?
90% collections. That's impressive.
I don't want kneecaps, but I wish you the very best for your retirement.
Well, thank you very much.
I can tell you from experience, it's wonderful.
I'm still going to be part of, I mentioned this the other night, I'm still going to be a part of the community. I'm not moving anywhere. I'm not going anywhere. Now I can just feel free to write those letters to the editors that I've always been penning. Thank you. Thank you again for allowing us to, allowing me to be part of your election effort and just be part of the community and the school system.
Well, thank you, Mr. Meyer. Have a wonderful retirement. Okay, moving on to item eight, consent agenda. We are, administration is pulling item 8G, award for Waco High School furniture. That's going to come back on another future meeting. Mr. Grant, is there anything that you like bold?
No.
Mr. Davis, anything you like bold?
No.
Mr. Vidania, anything you like bold?
No.
Mr. Ochoa?
No.
And Mr. Patton?
No, ma'am.
Okay, great. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented except for item 8G.
So moved.
Whoa.
That's a dead tie right there.
That's a dead tie. We'll give it to Angelo here as a first, a second with Grant. Next time, we'll give it to Grant. Any discussion, Mr. Grant?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Davis?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Vidania?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Ochoa?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Patton?
No.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously with 8G to be at a future meeting. Moving on to item number nine, review, discuss, and take appropriate action on the required annual review of CCMR Board adopted goals. Dr. Cornblum.
Hello, Madam President and Dr. Spicer and trustee members. I'm here tonight to report to you on the CCMR goals, board goals. And those are required by House Bill 3. And so let me explain the chart a little so that, and this is actually the chart we're given to put the information in. So let me explain that a little. So up top, where it says yearly goals, what that is, is TEA sets targets, and that's the aggregate of the class. So the whole total of the class, not broken down into sub-pop's. And so when you look up there, the class of 2022, remember, this is also lag data. It's a year behind. So the class of 2022, or 2021, rather, was our 2022 results. And so that 47% that you see there is our actual at that time. The class, or not the class of, but the 2023 goal, that 55% is our actual. When you get to 2024, the 63, I wanted you to see that. So the 63% was the goal. Our actual was a 61. And then you see it go on out to 2026. When you look at the bottom, these are divided out by our sub-populations. And so at the very, very bottom, in the very small print, you'll see 2026 goals. And that's because the commissioner set targets all the way out through 2027. And the 2027 goals are 2027 through 2032. I know, imagine. But the bottom goals for our sub-populations are broken apart and are different, of course, than the aggregate. So when we look at African-American, there, the target was 47, and we are at 47%. Hispanic, the target was 60, we're at 63. White, 71, we're at 74. Two or more races, 73, we're at 60. Special education, 64, we're at 73%. Economically disadvantaged, the target was 56, we're at 58. And English learners, 51 and 46. So all except our English learners and two or more races, we surpass the goals that the, the targets that the state has already set in CCMR. We have a very healthy college career military readiness program, and I think it shows in this data. Questions about that?
I have a question. So we can compare the numbers at the bottom to the numbers at the top? Is that what you're saying?
No. The numbers at the top are all students together.
Okay. Yeah, so that's where my confusion came when we first got these.
Yeah, that's.
We're looking at two different domains, right?
Yes, you are. So at the top, it's all. And those sub-populations on the bottom that are identified there are there because those are the sub-pop's that we have to report to the feds. So state, our sub-populations now, they redid, our accountability looks different. And so we don't have all of these. We have a super group. And so if, to confuse you even more, when you see star results, you won't see these sub-pop's broken out any longer. You'll see a super group at the end. So you'll still have, I think it's, is it four now, I think, and then your super group? That's just an aside. I was just telling you that this is based on federal criteria.
We talked, I think, last year, the year before, about, was it our military readiness wasn't included in these numbers?
Right.
And so we were scoring low. Is that a part of the reason that we are above our goals now? Because?
No. And these numbers, because it's lag data, they still weren't being counted. So we just started counting those with, I believe, the last year.
Next year's recording. Okay.
Yeah, we'll see it on this report. Take hold next year.
The wheels are turning, but I think you can continue.
Okay. Well, so, and that was just, you've already accepted the goals in the past, so that's just the annual review of the goals. Do we need to read the agenda for the next? Because it just bleeds right into the next.
Yeah, let's just go ahead and go on to the next. Yep, 10, review, discuss, and take appropriate action. Well, hold on. First of all, let me, before we move into that, does anyone else have any questions on CCMR? Is everyone okay? Okay. Moving on to item number 10. I just put this mitt in my mouth, so I'm so sorry for this. Review, discuss, and take appropriate action on the required annual review of the early childhood literacy and mathematics board adopted goals. Yeah, I'd love to see this. Great.
Okay, so these are based on third graders, and they're based on third graders who are at MEAT. So you have Approaches, Meets, and Masters. So these are all third graders who are at the Meets level. So, you know, with our tests changing, we had a good number of students who we were trying to get over the hump, you know, up to Approaches. None of that is reflected in this. The other thing, when I talk about growth at the bottom, it's not growth between the same group. It's growth toward the target because there is no growth in third grade. They're first-time testers. So it's a little confusing where that's concerned. We don't get to count growth in that way until fourth grade. So just like the CCMR report, the top numbers are the collective score of all third graders who were at the Meets level or higher in those years. So when we look at 2022, we had 26%. That's the actual, not the target. In 2023, there was 27%, and that's also the actual, not the target. What's important about that year is that's when the tests changed. So the data from 2022 really isn't comparable to the data in 2023 because, as we know, it was a completely different assessment at that time. Although, you know, we still have high expectations, but that's where the tests changed. In 2024, the 33% is the goal. 24% is what we scored. That's not up there yet. That'll be replaced. But I wanted you to see the target. And then 2025 and 2026, those are TEA targets, not ours. So any questions about that top line before I move to the bottom?
Yeah, I have a question. So what were the, what were the goals for 2022 and 2023? If those are the.
I would have to go back and look.
Okay.
Because when I replace the number, I don't have that number with me, but I can get that to you.
Did we meet our goal, or did we not meet our goal?
We were under a bit, but I can't, I can't remember. I mean, I'm, but I can pull them for you and certainly get them to Dr. Spicer, who can get them to you.
Okay. Okay, that'd be great. I'm just, this is.
I'm just.
Slide's very confused. I know it's not your slide, but.
No, it's okay. I'm just guessing. But I mean, because this has been an area where we've been trying to climb.
Yeah.
Can you tell, just, we've talked about this before, but the 33% number, I guess that's, that's the goal, right?
Correct.
Is that saying that 33% of the students that are in third grade meet the state requirement for reading?
Meet or exceeds.
So when we say meet, it's not just meets requirement. If they get Approaches, they've met the requirement. But remember, in accountability, there's the levels. So a student can approach his Meets or Masters. So that 33% doesn't even count Approaches at all. It's that they are, the students are at Meets or Masters.
Or Masters. That's what I was asking.
Yes, there's, yes.
So that assumption, I have a lisp. I had a surgery, and I sound like Yosemite Sam. I'm sorry. But, so that communicates that 67%.
Correct. Correct.
Are not meeting the expectation.
On that test.
On the, on the test, that's all, yeah.
On that one day's test.
On third grade, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Does this, does this number, I'm sorry, I'm learning as I go here. It's very confusing. The, the 33% there, or I guess any of the target goals, those don't include exceeds?
Yes, they do.
They do.
It's meets or higher.
Okay, so the only thing not included is approaches.
Correct.
Okay.
So we've got 67% that aren't making them the.
Yeah.
That aren't meeting.
Doesn't mean they didn't pass, but it means that they're not at the meets level or higher.
This is, this is what I find, I mean, of all the things wrong with it, that someone could look at this data and say, Waco ISD has set a yearly target goal of only 33% for their students to pass. It's very confusing if you don't.
That's actually a TEA goal.
Right, yeah.
That 33% is actually their goal.
But someone could look at it and use that. Yeah.
Well, actually, for the stars.
Is the.
Our goal, that's not right.
Meets mean they're on grade level. I'm just trying to make clear with that.
Correct, correct.
So we're saying over a majority of them are not on grade level.
According to this, yeah. But let me, let me say something too, as you're, so state targets. In 2027, when these targets change, because they, they're leaving it, you know, this way. So that 45% at 2026, that's the goal, right? But then after that, in 2027, they change. So the state's goal in 2027 is 55%.
Can you also explain, to go back to Mr. Davis's comment, that this test is not necessarily on grade level. Most of these star tests are above grade level on, on what our kids are being tested on. It is above.
So what I want to say about.
I think I understood that. I just wanted to make sure that the meets that we were talking about is the target that they set for that grade level, the state.
They do consider that on grade level, on grade level and ready for the next grade level.
Yeah, thank you. Clarity, the 33%, that's the state goal or that the goal that the state set for Waco ISD?
Yes, we're 24. We're at 24% for 2024.
Okay.
Yep. I do want to notate something on this, you know, when Denise has left us, but we, we do have a new person who's just trying to get her, you know, bearings right now. But one of the things, and she told you this, you know, she shared this before, but you might not remember, talking about, is it above grade level or is it not? Remember, when they take the test, the questions are weighted and scored differently. It's not like a straight average, like we average. And so when you look at the test and you look at the number of questions students had to get right to score certain things, the students had to get fewer questions right on this test for 2024, which means that there were higher weighted questions in there and the test was more rigorous in itself. Now, was it above grade level or how did that fall out? You know, I, we can't see it, so I don't know. But the other thing, well, two things. Number one, we have high expectations for kids. I mean, fundamentally, I don't have a problem with testing. I mean, you want to measure your, your kid's growth. I think when we're doing it, you know, properly, there's a number of things that go into these, into testing, you know, now since it's all on computer and, you know, different types of answer choices and knowing how to maneuver that too. So it's just a new, it's a new day where testing is concerned, so.
And I'll just add to that. One of the things that we've talked as a leadership team, and then I even told some of the teachers, I'll be going to PLCs just so I can see what we do. Regardless of what the state of Texas does, our job is to educate our students and we will do that. And our goal will be to make sure that when they leave us, they can go to a two-year or four-year, go straight to work, whatever they choose to do. So that's the goal for us, regardless of what they tell us they want us to do, we just have to make sure they're ready to go when they graduate from our system. So that's what we're going to focus on as we're going through all of this and the transition with the state. They're even looking at a new test already. I had another meeting last week. So we know change is coming, which is fine. We're going to adjust, we're going to make sure our kids are ready. That's the goal. And so we will keep to that.
Looking at the bottom, those, how the sub pops are broken out, the very bottom underneath the smaller numbers, those are the TEA goals. And then the 2024 actual are where we sat for each subpopulation. And if you'll notice, and I didn't say this with CCMR, if you'll notice when you look above, so like the 2024 actual for African American, we're at 17%. If you look above it, the target was 34. So the targets are different for different subpopulations through. So do you want me to read them or do you want to look, give you a moment to look at them and then let you ask questions about them?
Population means you have 20 people, is that, what constitutes a population?
It's 20 tests, I believe.
Sure. I thought it was 10.
It used to be 10. You can't keep up.
So I have a question. So you, okay, so you need 20 tests in order to fill one of these subpopulations. I realize that the district snapshot is tomorrow, but have we, have we taken any steps to ensure, when are those, when are those kids coded into those subpopulations, into African American, Hispanic? At registration? No, no, I mean, originally, when do they code, like, when is a student coded as Hispanic? When is a student, is that at registration?
Yes.
So have we taken any steps to ensure that, that all of those are 100% accurate? I'm just wondering if, you know, if we had a kid that's, if we're, if we're doing fine in one category and a kid was coded wrong and could be put, say, in the Hispanic category to boost that number a few percentage points? Like, how do we?
So remember, we talked about, I talked about PMS earlier?
Yep.
What happened is this, yes, Tiffany, the student, rolls in school. Her mother coded her X, Y, and Z right. But we have from the first day of school until August the 4th, what, the 4th October, 4th Friday in October, right? To get it right. So our registrars go back and check, counselors go back and check. If I'm over GT, right? I'm over here checking all the GT kids at my campus. If you're over at risk coding, you go and you double check and make sure they're all right. Everybody has a role to make sure we verify that right and then we sign off on it to make sure it's accurate. Because whatever we send, that goes to state and that's the gospel.
Because by that.
That's, I want to make sure that's what we're doing now.
Yes, sir. And keep in mind too, with the, with the economically disadvantaged, those kids are in another group as well.
Right, right.
Yeah.
But this means that we do not have 20 Asian-American students in the third grade.
Correct.
In all of Waco ISD.
Or that they don't report.
Correct.
Any additional questions about those?
Have we seen these numbers increase the way we want to see them increase year over year?
I mean, at the base level, I would say no, right? I mean, because we want our kids to excel. I think there are a lot of factors involved that have pushed against us as well, that we've, you know, tried to maneuver around with changing tests and different things like that.
Our mobility factor in our district is high as well.
But I thought, on the mobility, our schools are aligned, so if I go.
That's where the curriculum comes in.
Yeah, so it's that, I would assume wouldn't play that big of a factor in.
You know, correct, right? If they're following the curriculum, you know, and those things, there are lots of factors in that too. You know, it's oversight at the campus level. And then also, we, you know, as we know, we've talked about this a lot, this is also kind of a complex problem. And I actually had Dr. Lopez look this up because I was just curious, how many new teachers we had here? And it wasn't enough to make me say that it was impactful to these scores this year or like in the second grade. When they were in second grade, I had him look at that too, to see when these third graders moved up the year before. You know, what, did they have new teachers or how did that look? And I didn't, the data point wasn't as impactful that, you know, for me to share. But that said, it is a complex problem across the system though. If we look at the other grades, we do have a large number. And so to your point, yes, we have a curriculum, yes, we are aligned, but you have teachers just learning how to teach. And in some instances, you know, they're even working on certification. And so.
Plus you have kids who come into our district from other districts with using.
Oh, sure.
Different alignment of curriculum. So, but the mobility factor, whether you move from Bell's Hill to South Waco or JH Hines to Lake Air, there's going to be a lapse.
Yeah, but there's.
Just from the movement and the readjustment and the re-socialization to a new school setting.
Environment.
Yeah.
But academically, if they're following the scope and sequence and using the resources, yes, we are aligned. We all take the same common assessments to, to look at how that's going. And actually, our, we have to set measures for them. And so we set approaches, meets, and masters, but we set our approaches, meets, and masters higher than what the state has there set.
I would just hope if mobility is impacting this data in this large of a way that we would focus on how to mitigate that issue. Because we know we have a high mobility rate in Waco ISD. So I hope we're taking steps to address that because we know it's going to happen.
That's exactly why you, you want a district curriculum. And then also, we've talked about this a lot too, aligned resources across the district. So at one campus, and they're, they're not getting one thing, you know, they go to another campus and that's not available. We have those aligned systems across the districts.
That's where you look for equity in.
Which is what we've been building. I want to say, that's what I've been hearing.
Yes.
Years on the board, that we've been having an aligned curriculum across the district to address this very issue. So that's what, I just want to know, is it working? Because right now, we're saying mobility is factoring in, it has a huge way in, but we've been working against those issues. So I just want to know, are we seeing progress from the work we've been doing?
So if you were, this isn't a clear picture of the progress. If you remember, I mean, results aren't being shared really, but, or can't be. But when, at a board meeting, or it may have been, I can't remember how it was presented, but we showed the overall growth, right? How they were, because remember, for our district, we've been a growth district, right? So when you look at domain one, accountability, that's achievement. Domain two is the better of, growth or your relative performance. If you're taking care of that, your domain three should come out in the wash. It should just happen. So on that, that growth, remember that they made the scales, like the jumps in some instances were very large, bigger than we've ever had them. And we found out that after the fact. My point to that is the, the system is different, so it's not apples to apples. But when we looked at our growth a while back, overall, that we saw growth and, you know, strong growth in some areas for our students who hadn't been passing before, that's not reflected on these sheets because it's meets or above. And there is no true growth here because there's nothing to compare it to.
Because you can't show the growth.
Right.
Of.
Right.
May I ask a question, Dr. Spicer? Or a request? At, possibly at our next board workshop, could we get Dr. Cornblum just to go over, you know, the domains? And she did this for me last spring and, and I've been out of testing for a long time and it was overwhelming for me and I am imagining for other board members who don't have the, the testing experience, a lot of this probably sounds foreign and Dr. Cornblum did a great job on dumpling it down for me. And it would, I think it would be really helpful for us at our next workshop meeting for Dr. Cornblum to present just an overall, so when we're looking at these scores, we have a better understanding of what the state's asking and where the domains and growth versus performance. I think it would be helpful if, if you don't mind setting that up for our next workshop meeting. I think that would, that would help a lot on this. My, my second point, second question, outside of this, and I don't know if, I don't know this answer, outside of this, how can you tell me, if I come up to you, Dina, and go, tell me how Parkdale third graders, are they reading on level? How would you know outside of?
Star scores.
Star or district made tests? How do you know that, that our third graders are on grade level or where they are in relation to that continuum?
So we use iReady, that's our screener now and our progress monitoring tool. Last year, it was Renaissance.
Right.
We were using iReady for a lot of things around intervention to begin with. And so they developed a new pathways program, which requires them to take the diagnostic test. And the only folks who were required to give that one were our intervention teachers. But then a lot of teachers wanted it too. So certainly did not want to double test our kids. So that was the switch. And we actually surveyed around it, but that was the reason we switched to iReady, just a little historical note. But that is where we test BOY, beginning of year, middle of year, end of year. And so on that, it tracks expected growth. I mean, it shows you where they are. It'll give you their lexile. And then it tracks expected, tracks expected growth and then can also give you a star correlation as well.
So you do that BOY, MOY, ELY? So if I was to hit you up tomorrow and go, tell me where Parkdale, Hillcrest, JH Hines, where their third graders are, you would be able to say?
Pull a report and give that to you.
60% are on grade level, 30 or close, 20 or whatever?
Yep.
And y'all have that information?
Yes.
For just third grade?
No.
Or all grades?
All grades.
Up to eight or whatever?
Well, yes, up to eighth. Yes, up to eighth. Because we use a Renaissance in high school for TIA purposes mainly.
Right.
But not, not now. And so, yes, up to eighth.
So although our teachers have that information regarding their 25, 30 students, however many they have in their classroom, they're able to know that Dina is an excellent reader, Jim is a struggling reader, Angelo is almost there on grade level. So that would help with differentiation.
Yeah, and so, yes, and we also go out, and this would have been Denise and Carmen or myself, but there's actually a growth tracker that the campuses use to track. So they'll have, they wouldn't for third grade have star scores yet, but they would have their lexiles. They would have their quantiles for math. And then they would see where they are and then they set goals for kids. So if they're here now, what's our goal at interim? So we're getting ready to take our interim scores, those scores are added. So when I take interims, how are they tracking where that's concerned? Because they give you a projection as well. And so campuses kind of have an idea of who's sitting where and that, that's how we determine interventions.
I was going to say, so BOY would indicate tier one, tier two, tier three instruction level? And we do the BOY when?
It's at the very, not the, like, the first couple of weeks of school, we let people get acclimated.
Right.
Because especially at the elementary, you have to have some routines in place before you can test. It usually begins around the third week. We don't wait to start interventions based on that though, because if a student was with us before, we use end of year data to go ahead and start the interventions.
So do we do that with second grade as well?
All.
All grades? Down to you, Kinder?
Kinder, their intervention, they don't have a pullout. They, they might have a person who pushes in with them in little, smaller stints, but they don't have the pullout program like the other grades for tier three.
So to me, our screener would be much more accurate on knowing that we're going to produce kids who can get a job when they graduate or go to college or tech school based off what our screeners are saying versus the star test from TEA.
So Mr. Patton, could I, could I interrupt real quick?
Sure, I'm sorry.
What I'm realizing is I had thought that this was just an information report, kind kind of how we've asked for like reading scores cyclically, all of it. This is actually something in regards to House Bill Three, so it's basically T E A goals. So it's not gonna have the information that we typically get presented on kind of what, in our minds, are the kind of the reading data, where we get the screeners in the beginning of the year, in the middle of the year, and kind of end-of-the-year data. So that's, I think that's what feels kind of fumbly with this specific report. So with that in mind also, I would still love for you, if you could, if you still have questions and you want to speak to Dr. Cornblum. But I am realizing that these items, number nine, and items, this one here, were posted for action. So we have to adopt it. So this is basically, in so many words, T E A's goals-
That are your goals.
That are now our goals, that we have to adopt.
And let me just add one thing. You were talking, Mr. Davis, about just our current scores. One of the things that I will be pushing extremely hard is approaches is failure, okay? So you talk about approaches, meets, and masters. Meets is our goal, because that says you are ready to go at least to the next level. You might not be all the way there, but you've met your standard in your current goal. So we know we have work to do, but the mindset and the terminology and the thoughts and the language you're going to be using, if we have not already been, is meets. So yes, Tiffany got approaches, that's nice, but that's not good enough, right? So we are, I'll say, aware, attentive. And again, as I kind of go through and listen and meet and learn our systems, you know, what's strong and where we need to grow, we're gonna work on that. But the biggest thing for me is we have to just change some of our philosophy and thinking and standards, so that we're going for excellence, right? I want every child in our system to go and be a master's level student, right? So we're gonna start at meets. Approaches will not be in our vocabulary, and I know it is now because I've seen some of our goals, I've seen some different things on visiting campuses. But we're gonna kind of change some of those things. So we're gonna get it, we're not there yet, we're gonna own what we have. This is ours, it's mine. We're gonna own it, and then we're gonna go-
That's all you can do is-
Right, and we're gonna go forward, and we're gonna make sure we make the correct movements to ensure our kiddos get the best. So I just want to make sure I spoke to that, because it is alarming, you know what I mean? But we're gonna get it.
And I just want to say, in that workshop, I don't think we need you to dumb it down for us. I think we want to know what the approach is to get that growth. Because we've been hearing about plans of alignments and scope and sequence, and, you know, a lot of things for the past couple of years. And I would want to know, are we seeing that progress? Because this data, you know, I know we've had growth, I know we're moving forward. But when I look at seventeen percent, and the goal was thirty-four, it's alarming.
So let me clarify, because what he was asking for, and Mr. Patton was asking for him, what I did with him is different from that. So what I did with Mr. Patton was go through each domain, what it meant, how you score, you know, how you move, kind of the new accountability system, and how we earn, you know, the ratings that we get. He and I didn't go over the things that you're talking about. So those are different, different purposes. So we can decide, right? Okay, okay, sure. What I would really like for you to see, quite honestly, is for someone to present the curriculum so you could see what's in it and how it works. Because to say we have an aligned curriculum, what does that mean to you, you know? But if you saw it, then that would make more sense.
We can do that, we can do all three of those in that presentation. So we'll work on that, and we'll get a date. It probably will not be the November seventh, that's the next workshop, just because that was kind of filling up already. But give us time, we'll bring it together, and we'll bring it back, okay? Thank you, guys.
Mr. Ochoa, we do have to make a motion on this item. And then we're gonna go back and make a motion on item number nine.
We have to do math as well.
I'm sorry, what?
We have, we have to also look at the math.
And the math, okay. Let's, could we, for the sake of clarity, before we move on to item ten, could we go back up to item number nine? We're gonna pause right now on item ten, in math, and we're moving up to item number nine. So this is review, discuss, and take appropriate action on the required annual review of C C M R Board Adopted Goals. So this is T E A's goals that they're wanting, that the board is gonna adopt. Do I hear, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move.
Thank you, Mr. Patton, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Vedanya. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, passes unanimously, and I think the discussion is over on that item. Okay, going back to item number ten, thank you, Dr. Cornblum, for allowing the interruption. Did you want to say something else?
Yeah, I mean, I understand what we're trying to do here. I'm looking forward to hearing more about the curriculum, because like I said, I'm still learning as I go. I have some concerns, lots of concerns really. I just want to really make sure we're focusing on the right things. I think, I mean, it's just, I've been in the district a long time. I think it's easy to say it's new teachers, I think it's easy to say it's transformation zone kids, and it's a mobility issue. But we really need to figure out exactly what it is so we can target that. You know, we have, we have decades of research on, on the science of reading, and, you know, these frameworks that, you know, on teaching kids how to read. And I can't figure out why we keep falling short of our goals. I just want to make sure that we're not finding excuses, we're finding-
Solutions.
Well, I want to, I want to clarify. So when I say new teachers or whatever, those aren't excuses. What I'm trying to say is it's a complex problem, it's not just one-
I get that. And, you know, and if we have an aligned curriculum, then it shouldn't matter if a kid goes from South Waco to Hillcrest P D S, it shouldn't matter. I mean, theoretically.
So a few years back, the state, and I'm kind of going off grid a little bit, but the state asked, districts had to submit an equity plan. And the equity plan was based, the reason being is because they were saying, and research shows it, that are the most struggling districts, most struggling, you know, places usually have the most inexperienced staff, right? And so what they wanted you to do is address that, like, address. Then how are you going to address the fact that that might be the case where you are? And so to say it's a complex problem, and someone mentioned it earlier, with the little districts around us, you know, and like, it's very easy to go someplace else and not teach here, you're trying to build a very experienced teaching staff, because we need that, right, to get to where we want, an experienced leadership staff. So growing, you know, to Mr. Davis's point, you have a curriculum. If the curriculum is A, and the end goal is C, that person in the middle is the person who helps ensure that everything's being carried out. So that's important. So there's lots that goes into this than, you know, just the aligned curriculum, it's-
And I think, just to piggyback off what trustee Ochoa said, we have a leadership academy in the district where we train leaders. We have, you know, workshops and boot camps for new teachers. So if those things are not proven to be effective, maybe we need to go back to the drawing board. And that's my, because when I'm hearing that, I'm like, well, we have a whole academy for leaders that we're growing, you know? We have a boot camp for new teachers, and we see pictures, and they're in trainings. And I just feel like, you know, it's disappointing when we see this and say, oh, it's because the kids moved, and we knew the kids were gonna move beforehand, or we have new teachers, and we knew, we approved for teachers with no credentials. We approved that as a board, so we knew that was coming. So I think we just have to prepare to find more solutions. But, and I don't want to sound unappreciative of the work that's being done, I'm just saying that we might want to, if they are not proven to be effective, we need to pivot.
When I was talking about leadership, I wasn't insinuating that they're not effective. In fact, our leadership teams are more high-functioning, more effective than they've ever been. And that, there's been a concerted effort on that to grow our pipeline, as you know, and to also provide leadership development. And I'm telling you, they know how to do things, how to look at data, how to put things in place, how to coach their teachers, like people around us aren't doing. And so I'm not saying that to say they're not, I'm just saying that that is a point, right? You can have aligned everything, but, but we have to ensure that it's being implemented with fidelity.
I think we can move on to mathematics, and I think that, just to recap, I think the board is obviously very focused on ensuring that our kids have the very best. And I think luck step with the administration, this is something we can kind of do a deeper dive. If we need more information, we'll get this in a workshop, we'll be able to see some stuff. I think, like Dr. Spicer said, she's here listening and learning. And I think sometimes, so I just think, you know, this, this, the heart behind this is everyone wants the best for our kids. And I think that we can drill down and find those solutions, and I'm hopeful for that. Do you want to move on?
I just want, one last thing. I appreciate the work you're doing, Dr. Cornblum, you and your whole team. And I hope you understand that anyone on this board would pick up a broom and sweep a parking lot if it helped a kid learn how to read. But at the same time, you know, if I meet a new teacher at a band concert, and I ask them if they're getting everything they need support-wise from the people above them, I hope they would say absolutely, that would be my expectation.
I can tell you, we're out on campuses more than we're in our offices. So that means I'm slow sometimes to reply to email, because I'm not at my computer. But Mr. Davis, I think another thing that, and I'm gonna be transparent and real right now, to, I'm reflective, right, in my practice. And so to talk about needing to improve or needing to assess things like that, I know that, you know? And I think that's, conversations that Dr. Spicer and I've had about, you know, what do we need to look at, what do we need to do, you know, what do we need to address? I was that way when I was a principal, this is our data, you can't run from it, it is what it is. So how do we respond to it? And so very reflective and, you know, open-minded in terms of what do we need to do? If there's something else out there, you know, and you've, you've heard from the, from the beginning, different systems that we didn't have that we do now, and those things. And I do think there's a lot that's working. But I also think our teaching force and all of those things, not as an excuse, but it's different. The landscape of education is different, and we have to respond differently. And so, you know, is the curriculum, yes, it's aligned? Is it working for them, you know, is, are our teachers able to implement it, right? Well, you know, that's a discussion to have, and then to see where we go from there. So-
I want to say, I'm appreciative of the work you guys are doing too, and I hope that's coming across.
Yeah.
I think I'm just really concerned at the numbers we're seeing in front of us. And I think I would rather, if we're gonna sit in the workshop, not hear another explanation of how the test works, and hear about what we're doing to make it work for us. That's, that's the point I was trying to make.
I would love for you to see what's happening.
Can I say one thing? When I was Executive Director at World Hunger Relief, we discovered that twenty-three percent of kids living in McLennan County were food insecure, one in four. The state average was like twelve, eleven and a half percent. And it's real easy, in the way I first thought, to say, well, then let's grow more gardens, let's hand out more food, and we can solve food insecurity. But as we began to partner with the Collaborative on Who are in Poverty, and some international programs, the discovery is it, it's what we called kind of a big hairy beast, that, that solving something like food insecurity in a community like ours takes about twelve things working together in the same direction at the same time, because it involves healthcare, it involves housing, it involves childcare, it involves all kinds of different things. And we talked about mobility, well, mobility is more than just plugging and playing, it's also about the stressors that come with, why do I have to move, right? It's about rent, it's about bills, it's about breaking up, it's about a whole lot of things. And so we are in the midst of a big hairy beast here that's gonna be a whole lot more than just, we gotta improve our reading ability. I mean, instruction, right? And it's more than just curriculum across the board, because it involves healthcare, it involves childcare, it involves housing and occupation and all these kinds of things. Can we do better without addressing all those? One hundred percent. Is it gonna take all those things being aligned, working in the same direction, at the same row, at the same time, the same pace? Yes. And so populations that don't have many of those issues, man, you plug and play, put in a new curriculum, and here you go. We have a big hairy beast, and it's solvable. But the world has been trying to solve hunger for a really long time. And we've been trying to solve all kinds of things for a really long time. We have to realize, not realize, just own the fact that it's not just about instruction, it's not just about curriculum, it's not just about high-fiving kids when they walk into the classroom. It's a much, much more complex problem that we have to own, and then we have to line. So what we did, we partnered with Baylor, and they partnered with the World Food Program, and they partnered with Michigan University to try to solve, how do we solve this hunger thing in McLennan County? Well, it took all those organizations just to start thinking about it. So how we look at that third-grade test score issue, I hope, is under a really big umbrella of a whole lot of things-
Correct.
-working together.
Yes, it has to be a systems approach.
And this is their only shot. So our kids that are coming from those hard situations, that trustee Grant said, this is their only ticket out of those situations. So it's very important that we figure it out. And it is hard, it's complicated. I work with kids who are going through those things every day, it's a harsh reality, but the only way they're gonna get out and break those cycles in their family is education. We have to figure it out.
Yeah. Agree. Great.
Math, let's do math.
Okay. All right, so we already know about the top and the goals, so looking, so there's that. To let you understand, though, in 2027, that end goal that you don't see there, twenty-seven to thirty-two, it jumps up to fifty-eight percent.
From forty?
Yes, up to fifty-eight.
Is twenty-six the actual or the goal? Goal?
Twenty-six is the goal, mhm, yeah.
But twenty-three and twenty-two are the actuals?
Yes. Yes. But the, I mean, there's a huge jump to the fifty-eight.
Oh, hundred percent.
Yeah. Which is okay, but I want you to be aware that that's the unseen part over here. Okay, when we go to the bottom, it pops again, and so we can see where we are. The bottom line is the goal. You can see the goals are there for you, and then you can see where we are. So the goals are actually above also on the chart as well, they're at the bottom. And that's the 2026 goal, right? So that's what we're working toward right now, but that's the goal in place that we're shooting for. And I will say to this too, that we have put in a new math framework, a new math program. That focuses more on problem solving and, and trying to supplement the math program. We haven't had a math adoption through the state. There was supposed to be a math adoption of new materials, and they pushed that back a little. So supplementing our current resources to meet the rigor of, you know, the new tests and all of those things. And so we've supplemented, and we've implemented a math framework that started last year, but it just started. So, you know, we are seeing progress with that, but it's just taking hold right now.
Yes, so I will, I was just looking around to see if there was anyone who was gonna say anything. Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the required annual, the Early Childhood Literacy and Mathematics Board Adopted Goals.
I'll move.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Patton. Second, thank you, Mr. Grant. Any discussion, Mr. Grant? Any discussion, Mr. Davis?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Vedanya?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Ochoa? Any discussion, Mr. Patton?
No.
Okay, great, all in favor, vote aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Cornblum, I think you hear the high expectations from this board. And I know that the high expectations are also coming from the administration and the staff. And so I'm looking forward to increases in scores. And I think, you know, kind of hit the nail on the head when we said it is, some of our kids, this is their way out, so.
There's a lot to share around this, I think we'll hit some of it when, when we present at the workshop around what we're doing, but the alignment and our goals and the campuses' goals and what they're working towards. So I'm actually excited about that, because I want you to know, you know, what we're doing and the work that's going into it.
Well, and thank you so much for all of your work, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you for, Dina, thank you for answering some of our tough, or at least answering some of my tough questions. You are transparent, and as Spicer said, you know, these are, and as you said, these, the data is ours, and we just need to figure out where the holes, where we're stumping our toe. And I firmly believe that you and your department can make that happen.
Thank you, I appreciate you all too, so.
Okay, moving on to item number, that was really loud. Moving on to item number eleven, announce- Moving on to item number 11, announcements. Ms. Cox?
Good evening, President Cordwick, Dr. Spicer. Welcome aboard and trustees. I can tell you where we are not stubbing our toe. Mr. Patton, Saturday, the Lion Pride Band will be taking the field in the area marching contest. Let's give them a round of applause ahead of that big competition. We're so excited for them. There will be a couple of chances, as Dr. Spicer highlighted, to see them either bright and early tomorrow morning or at the game tomorrow night. But their, their eye is definitely on the prize. And that's making it to the area marching contest in Flugerville Saturday. They perform at approximately 10:30. You can't ever like, you know, if you've been to the band competitions, get there a little earlier, stay a little later, just be there on time. At approximately 10:30, there are tickets. Please let us know if you need any information, but you do have to pay to enter. Monday, October 28th is a Student Holiday and Staff Development Day. That evening, beginning at 5:00 PM here in the administration building, we will be opening the building to our employees and their families for our third annual Waco ISD trick or treat event. Costumes are encouraged. Employee IDs are required. This year, we are making some adjustments to the team planned. We are not going to travel up and down all the floors. Precarious challenges with stairs and elevators. So it'll be a great path. So please still come out. It also could be a little bit quicker too, so just move through with your families. But we do hope you'll come see. There is book themes that every floor and department has. So definitely that focus on literacy. The next night, Tuesday, October 29th, Waco PD, Waco ISD PD and Athletics, thank you Coach Love, will be hosting their community wide drunk or treat at Waco ISD Stadium beginning at 5:30 PM. That's always a great, very well attended event. It looks like we've adjusted the times a little bit just to even make more space, more time for the crowds that we expect. Equal, well, much more on our hearts and minds right now that I know a lot of you have talked about the lines that you've been standing in. Early voting for the November 5th, 2024 general election is underway. It started Monday, October 23rd and runs through Friday, November 1st. McLennan County Elections has compiled all sorts of great resources. They're a great partner of ours and a great partner for this community. Their resources online include sample ballots and polling location information. As long as date, other dates and times, please go check it out so you can be an informed voter and go get in one of those lines. I think I heard South Waco line wasn't too long. Is that what you said, Mr. Trustee Grant? East Waco, okay. So get out and go vote.